I can do it. You want to do it?
I'll the December 27, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order this evening. I will be asking the Planning Commission if they would elect and take nominations from the floor for a chairman pro tem and a vice chair pro tem as our chairman Pat Bo and vice chair John Bickford are not here for this meeting with us tonight.
I make a motion that we get Steve Doria as chairman.
Second. Show of hands.
All in favor?
All right, you in charge tonight. Vice chairman.
Next thing would be to nominate a vote, a vice chair for tonight. Have a motion.
Make a motion for Joyce to be the vice chairman.
I have a second.
Second.
Have the motion and seconded that Joyce be the vice chair for tonight. All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Planning Commission come to order. Invocation will be led by Joyce and the pledge of allegiance, I will lead. Please stand.
Thank you. Silence, thank you. Father God, thank you for this evening. Thank you for those who've come out to do the work of Buckingham County. Guide the Planning Commission as we make decisions tonight. And thank you for your ever-loving love and your presence. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Need to establish a quorum. How many do we have? Five of eight. We have a quorum. Adoption of agenda.
So moved. Second.
All approved, all in favor of adoption of agenda, please raise your hand. Approved. Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have approval of minutes and second for the last meeting. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. So moved. Five of five. Public comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one individual signed up for public comment. It's Marie Flowers.
I want to wish you all a happy holiday. And I'm here to complain. I, there is a public notice for hearing for Mr. Kaufman who lives and owns property on Buckingham Springs Road. And he was supposed to have a public hearing tonight on his property to be zoned to make sheds and whatnot. And in the newspaper, two weeks, it was wrong. The, the address and the zoning application was the same as for Mr. Burmeister. And both of the zoning requests are for Mount Rush Highway. And it just seems to me that a decision that this hearing could have been made public a lot sooner, don't any, has any of you seen this in the paper? Do you all look at the zoning notices in the paper to make sure that they're correct? Anyway, there were a number of people who have come here tonight interested in the issue on Buckingham Springs Road. And they haven't stayed, of course, but I just want to, there's got to be a better way. I mean, do we have to wait until Ms. Edmonds asks you, is this not a legal, isn't it legally required that the zoning requests be two weeks ahead of time? And if they're incorrect, that they should just automatically be postponed?
Yes, ma'am. We'll take care of that when it comes.
Okay, there, that's my comments. Keep your eyes open when the, when, when your zoning request so that you know what's in the paper also, so that the people who are interested and live near any of the properties have an opportunity to respond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did read the paper and what they, what it, what was in there, I thought was correct. And am I wrong, Nikki?
The address is incorrect.
At all?
The request, Mr. Kaufman's application is not, that's all correct. What's incorrect is the address. So tonight, when we get to his public hearing, in lieu of that incorrect information, I'll be asking you if you'd like to hold that in January, but his is not the first case to come up tonight.
We have any more public comment?
That's it for this public comment period.
Should I close that? Okay. Public comment is closed. Old business?
First case this evening is a public hearing for case 21 S U P 287. It's James Burmaster. It's located at tax map 158 parcel 11. It contains approximately 103.7 acres. It is at 5481 Mount Rush Highway, Dillon, Virginia, in the James River Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A1. And his request is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb and breakfast, bed and breakfast with events. Mr. Burmaster states in his narrative that the main purpose for this application is to have events at his farm for all different types of shows such as music, car shows, live concerts. He would like to entertain 3,500 guests for these events, which is included in the narrative, and Airbnb, et cetera. Mr. Burmaster presented his initial application in August, but after discussion with the Planning Commission, he decided to resubmit with changes. This is his application request. There are currently 12 conditions that have been suggested and may be considered. Any amendments or deletions of those are always welcome. Mr. Burmaster is here with us this evening to address any questions or concerns, and we do have four people signed up for the public comment period for this public hearing.
Carl, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit of your plans again? I know we've been through this several times, but for our benefit, I think it would help.
I've been up here several times, just a quick, get up with me, you know, I've lived here 17 years, been hunting here 35, 40 years, way back, back in Pop Paratelli days on Route 636, Ravenstaffer, I've been here a long time. Never in, since I've been here, has families had a place to take their family to have a good time, you know, to go and do things, whether it be picnic, whether it be live music, whether it be a car show, you know. Bought this farm from Susan Coffey, and she initially wanted to do something like this, and she, 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 her health didn't get as good, so she moved to a small house and bought the farm. So I went ahead and put in my application. The 3,500 people, I would like to get permission to do that maybe two to four times a year. That's it, not all the time. Weekly, bi-weekly, I would like to have events, this is a car show, which be a local band, local music, you know, what it may be, just to get people out there to be able to enjoy my, our farm. You know, we have a 33 acre lake out there, we have plenty of room. And we've, I've already addressed the V dot situation, we've got 300 yards of road frontage, they told me what I need to do. If, you know, I don't suspect any type of that number to happen this year, it's a learning phase for me, you know, I've never done anything like this before in my life, this is, you know, I'm a musician, so I always put band in there, but it may not be a band, who knows? But I have plenty of road frontage, I had it okayed by V dot. Ms. Noddy's here, I had her and her engineer come out to the lake, showed them what I wanted to do, and they wrote letters, no effects to the lake, anything like that. So basically, I just, basically on the paper, I just want to have live events, and I want to do what I can do, and I want to keep the, the nature, I want to keep it pretty, you know, I want to try to, I don't want to mess anybody up, you know, the way, if you look at the, can you put that up there? The way, you don't have to, but the way you look at the way that the spillway is, most of the smaller events will be up above on, near the spillway. But if it gets to a larger event, it'll be on the spillway with this portable stage or portable whatever, and the way it's cut, it, the music's directed eastward, and it's going up like that. So I don't feel like, you know, I don't want to affect anybody's piece, anybody's, you know, anything like that, because I live in the country and I like my piece, I like to fish, I fish in that lake, I take care of that lake, you know, the best I can, I don't pick up, the trash comes down Creek to Creek all the time from that lake, it comes into the lake, and we got it coming all the time. So this isn't about a big money-making venture for me, it's, yeah, do I want to pay my bills and try to pay off the farm with it, yes. But it's really about Buckingham, I like to have youth groups come out here, I like to have, you know, first responders come out here, fire departments, police, and just to enjoy the place, it's a beautiful place. And I would employ any of y'all, any day you want to come out, and I'll take it down there, and y'all just take a look, see what I want to do. Questions, you, you can answer anything?
Does anyone have any questions from the board? Or public hearing?
Hang on, hold me, hold me.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
And as soon as they open, hold me.
Open public hearing now.
And Mr. Chairman, there are four signed up to speak this evening regarding this case. The first one is Michelle Saltz, actually Carl Burmaster signed up to speak. Did sign up for your case.
Hello? Hi, I'm Michelle Saltz, and I'm actually one of the landowners, I'm on the other side of the lake. I've got about 50 acres on the other side around the cove. So I'm here tonight, first of all, Nikki, thank you for getting me back on the list. I think I was inadvertently left off the last go-around. So I'm, in general, I'm in support of the application, but I'm here hoping for a stipulation. So the unique differentiator for this property is actually the lake, you know, if you're going to have events and all of that stuff, you're going to have people taking pictures, it's a beautiful body of water. In fact, that's why I invested on the other side, so that I can enjoy the, the serenity and the beauty of that actual body of water. So, but as far as I've been able to see in this application, there's very little language that talks about the steps that are going to be taken to preserve the quality of water. And if any of you guys have been out there lately, you'll see that the lily pads, the weeds, the blue algae are overtaking and, and choking out the surface area of the lake. So if this is to move forward, I'd really like to get the commitment of the Burmasters to contribute to the cleanup work that I want to start, and then hopefully take around to the complete body of water. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
The next individual signed up to speak is Matthew English, followed by Chad Perkins.
Good evening.
You state your name for us, please.
Matthew English.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was approached by a letter that was presented by the county. I'm a landowner, and all my family has lived on that lake their whole life. Back in 1985, that lake was, construction was being built when I was being born. And my family owns over 60% of that lake. That's sacred ground for us. By all means, we want to be good neighbors, Mr. Burmaster. And we look forward to doing that. But concerts and over 3,500 individuals in downtown Toga, that brings a big concern. Also, another big concern is the condition of the property. If you hadn't drove by there, you need to. I don't know what kind of venues I'm going there, but the way the condition is now, that's not inviting. It is a beautiful property, and it's been home to many of us for many years. You know, 3,500 people, like I said, in Toga, it's not that big of a community. And that brings big concerns, concerts, car shows, and things like that. I don't know. But like I said, the condition, the number of people that he's stating. and what they own, and what the adjoining landowners own, brings big concern. And I would appreciate if y'all would take this into consideration, that, you know, before y'all pass anything, that y'all go out there, look at this property, and look at what he's proposing. I greatly appreciate that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chad Perkins.
Evening. Chad Perkins. The house beside Mr. Burmaster, driveway adjacent to him, just moved in in August. Family's lived there all my life, that lake we grew up on, me and my brother, Matt. Every weekend, that's where we stayed. Like you said, we own a pretty big portion of that lake, always have. I have no problem with Mr. Burmaster doing whatever they want to do. Welcome to have whatever you want to have. I just want to make sure. I have three small kids. They're one, three, and five. Got a lot of years ahead of us, them growing up in that house. Just want to make sure every Friday and Saturday night, we're not listening to loud music till midnight. That's my biggest thing. I have no problem with anybody having a venue. That's great. Me and my wife was married at a venue. That's- that's great. But just want to make sure that we're not staying up till midnight with three small kids on Friday and Saturday listening to music. Other than that, I have- I take no concern. I'm glad you do whatever you want to do. That's your- that's your property. Good neighbors. We've hunted that. We've hunted Susan's place all our life. Thing, we're there. You know, we're good neighbors, but just don't want to listen to loud music on Friday and Saturday nights, you know, till midnight. That's my biggest thing. Other than that, I don't have anything to say.
You'd rather see a day party.
That's fine. I mean, you know, we got the lake. I don't- you don't really care about people, you know, during the day. We own a big portion of that lake. We don't care about people coming out there and having all these boats on the lake during the day and partying and carrying on. We don't- we don't really want that, you know. We fish on there, too. Take your kids out fishing. We don't want to be out there with 20, 25 boats and all this stuff, people partying during the day. You know, we don't want that, but, you know, whatever you want to do, hey, that's- that's your thing. But we just want to keep Toga civil, kind of, you know. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Burmaster, okay, let me close. Closing public comment.
First of all, what Chad said, I have no intentions of having any events at night, at all.
That was my next question.
At all. I don't want- it's a lot easier to operate during the daytime, because you can see what's going on. I don't foresee a large amount of people this year at all. I got to kind of take it slow, you know, as I go. As far as the property, it is dilapidated. I've been working on it. You know, I walk with two canes. I lost both parents this year, and I had kidney cancer. So it slowed me down considerably for the last seven months. I lost two parents in seven months, had kidney cancer, and took three months to recover from that. So, yeah, I'm one person. My son works 70 hours a week. He's another person. But we will have it ready to go when it's time to go. And y'all are more than welcome to come out there and look at it and see what I've already done to it. Not on the outside yet. Most of them dilapidated buildings are coming down. They're not fixing old turkey barns or anything. They're all coming down. Only thing I'm fixing is the house. Spoke with Tripp Maxi. He's going to build me a outdoor pavilion down on the upper side of the spillway. And for Chad also, that lake is off limits for any events. It's not- it's going to be- if there's any events down there, it's going to be a partition going across. Nobody's going to be in that lake, but that's- that's an insurance nightmare, and it's just not going to happen. And I love that lake. I'm not going to let anybody down there. I've fished it for many years, too. I've known Susan a long time. So, that being said, you know, daytime thing that he's concerned about, I agree. I mean, I agree with him 100%. You know, I don't- I don't think there should be no nighttime loud music. I know. I mean, I hear hunting dogs comes in all the time at 3:00 in the morning, and it keeps me up. And I say, I know what they're talking about. It's, you know, it's peaceful out there for the most part, except for the highway. As far as loud music, you know, most venues operate at 95 decibels, you know, which is no more than a truck- a jack trailer coming down the road. It's the same. Big concerts are at 120 decibels. That's talking big, big concerts. You know what I mean? So it's- and where that location is, I'm willing to work with anybody to do anything. As far as the house being worked on, yes, it is being worked on. And it's going to take me six more months to get the house ready. And the two turkey barns to be knocked down, and I got a crew coming in there with bulldozers and the equipment, and they're going to clean the place up and do fencing and everything. I didn't want to jump the gun, go to the bank, sign a note to do all this unless I knew this was going to be approved. Take a chance. I just ask y'all to give me a chance. I'll work with my neighbors the best I can. I know nobody- I know not everybody's going to be happy, but I will try to make everybody happy, because that's just how I am. That's how I'm built.
Should we put in a stipulation, maybe a time? I know you said you weren't going to have a time problem.
Daytime, daytime, summertime, it don't get dark till 8:30.
What's that?
It don't get dark till probably 8:00 in the summertime. I would never see anything going past 8:00, even. That's that cleanup during- during the summertime. The wintertime, I don't want to have anything, because I don't like the cold. So as far as the 3,500 people they're talking about, that might be twice a year, if it ever happens. I just submit it to the county, because I didn't want to have to come back to the county. And as far as the algae in the lake, I didn't put that algae in the lake. God did. And if you see the upper end of that lake, Saltz's property, that's where all the silt comes in, okay? It's probably two foot deep, maybe a foot deep. The other end of the lake is deeper. You're never going to stop it. You could spend $20,000 cleaning that place out, and in five years, it's going to be right back. And, you know, I can't commit to- because I'm not- I'm not having people come out to take pictures of the lake. You know what I mean? I like the lily pads of the lake. It's good for the fish. It puts oxygen in the water, you know? People that fish love it. They wouldn't want all that stuff gone. So I mean, I respect her concerns about the beauty, but those water lilies have, you know, purposes.
Hold on a second. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions about to call?
How many people share that lake as property?
As Mr. Perkins said, Chad, they- they own- it's only a few property owners, but they own the majority of around the lake, the Perkinses do. Probably 60%. Miss Saltz owns a little piece of it. I own a piece of it. And I'm not sure who owns the little piece on the other end right there. Somebody does. I don't know. But I think it's like four people, correct? Four people.
Four people. So right now, who is responsible for the ecology of the lake?
San Francisco Water Authority. She's here. She takes- they take care of the lake. She had Kelly right here. I had her come out with her engineer, showed them what I was proposing to do, so it have no effect on the lake at all.
So if you're not having lake events?
You can see the lake from where the vent's going to be, but it's not a lake-go-swimming, go-boating, go- nothing like that.
But that's what I'm asking.
No, I don't- any of these fences is going to have- there's going to be no lake access at all.
Think we should put in a time, so do we?
I would.
Say nothing past 10:00 at night? 8:00, 10:00?
Eight o'clock.
If I need to change something, maybe I- if we put a stipulation in there, if I had a special event or something, so I could come in and submit it to the board, and they can submit it to the landowners, and if they agree to it, I could do it, something like that.
Well, the north ordinance is 11:00.
Okay. North ordinance is 11?
Yeah. What if you want to do something to-
I'm just trying to keep everybody happy. That's right.
You want to say 8:00?
8:00 or 9:00.
9:00. It's good 9:00.
So we'll add that to the conditions.
So be no condition, no event to be held past 9:00 P.M.?
Right.
Burmaster, you had asked about if that needed to be changed, if there's any modification to these conditions.
I submit it to the board and talk to my neighbors and see if they would agree.
That's not what they're placing in it right now. So if you have no event past 9:00 P.M., that is your condition that you are held to. If you need a modification from that, that requires a brand-new application.
Okay.
Summertime, it don't get dark till 9:00.
That's right. That's right. I can't guarantee 100% everything will be gone by 9:00, because I have to clean up and everything. But I will say the music will be stopped. Believe me, the band thing, I think it scares everything, big concert thing. I don't think that's where it's going to end up going. I'm a musician. You know, it's a- I think it's more of a car show, it's more- or just something during daytime for people to come and hang out, eat a hot dog, do whatever, and let the kids run around and have a good time. I'm not trying to hurt anybody. I don't want to mess anybody's way of life up. You know, I lived off Tower Hill Road in Buckingham for a very long time. It was very peaceful. I've hunted- I've worked Susan's cows for many, many years, worked that farm for many years, love it there. I get it. You know what I mean? I don't want to hurt anybody.
Carl, I did notice where you were looking for promoters up and down the East Coast, and it bothered me a little bit because-
Not promoters. Not promoters.
Well, for event promotions and things. So what's- what's going to happen when you have 5,000 people show up? I mean, are we going to have a problem?
Well, I'm not. If I- if it gets to that, I'm going to have to do, it's going to be invitation-only. So many tickets sold, period. And I don't ever think I'll reach that number. I really don't. You know, just in case. I just don't think it's going to happen. But you'd have to have a mighty big band, and then it'd have to be ticket-only. You know, you could come up for ticket-only.
So you will be in charge of that over any- the 3,500 is absolutely the limit?
I'll be in charge and take care of that personally.
Because you don't have things turning into more and more down the line, and you got a Woodstock on your hands. That's what I mentioned in our- in our other meeting, so.
No, I'm not going to have that.
Okay. I'm just saying.
I understand.
Any more comments on it?
Yes, sir. No more than 3,500. 100%. That's right.
Right. That was my- Right. That was my concern, too, and Carl says he'll adhere to that, so.
Okay, I will make sure of that. That's my job.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you. I just spoke about the addition of property. I'll take care of my property, okay? You worry about your property. I worry about mine.
Okay. I'm going to have to stop there, okay? Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve with the added condition of 9:00 stop at parties and move it on to the Board of Supervisors.
You have a second? I have a motion that we consider passing to the Board of Supervisors with one additional comment, condition. If that is okay, we'll have a vote on it now. All in favor of doing this, passing it for Carl through to the Board of Supervisors, please raise your hand. Five of five, six of six. So passed. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Nikki.
The next case?
Yes, sir. The next case, the public hearing, would be for case 21 S U P 294. This is Joseph Kaufman. As we are aware, Mr. Kaufman's notice for the public hearing in the Farmville Herald had an incorrect address. With that incorrect advertisement, my request would be, if it would be the pleasure of the Planning Commission to hold his public hearing after advertising correctly on January 24, 2022, at 7:00 P.M.
Still move.
I have a second? Okay, so we moved in second, and we do this at our next- that will be our next meeting, right?
Right.
Okay. All in favor of doing this, raise your right hand, please. Five of five. Next case?
Our next case is 21 S U P 295. This is Jennifer Sombar and Katie Van Skiver. This is Tax Map 9, Parcel 10A. It contains approximately 25.159 acres, and it's located at 143 Hatton Ferry Road, Scottsville, in the Slate River Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A1. The request before you is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb, bed and breakfast, campsites, and event center. The Ms. Sombar contacted the zoning office as a result of a conversation questioning the activities held. Ms. Sombar obtained an application to come in to compliance with the zoning ordinance. She was instructed to not hold events at this time pending the outcome of the special use permit application. She is working with the building inspector in an effort to bring certain structures into compliance with zoning and the building code, and it will be necessary to work with Virginia Department of Health regarding necessary permitting for the septic field and further approval for these structures. For this case, there are 14 conditions. Both of our applicants, Ms. Sombar and Ms. Van Skiver, are here with us. They have contacted me via email to let me know of their agreement with the conditions currently, and they're here to answer questions or concerns. And we do not have anyone signed up for their public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Would you all like to say anything about the permit that you're asking about, or tell us anymore about it? We've been through it, I know, at the first meeting, but just- just to let us- let everybody, you know, let- I'd like to say something first, that we have two new members tonight, and maybe a bad time. I should have said it before. And I'm sorry I didn't. J.D. Cruz on the end, I'd like to welcome him to our new commission, for the Planning Commission. He lives in Buckingham County, and his grandfather had been here for many, many years, and we welcome him tonight. Also, Stephen Taylor, he's from District 7. We'd like to welcome him. He's a resident of Buckingham County. And just thank you for taking the position and listening to what goes on and help us out if you can, and we really appreciate it. And J.D., I didn't mention that you were from District 4, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay? Okay?
Thank you. So we had a dream to open an animal sanctuary. So we looked for a farm for 10 years, and we found a farm that was better than we could ever have dreamed of. This is a little slice of heaven. It was like that before we ever got there. So we've been there for about two and a half years. We do- we have- we have a bunch of rescue animals. And after living there, we realized that this place is so special, and there's so much to it, that we really wanted to open this up to more people, to enjoy the peace, the beauty. We're promoting kindness and compassion. So our idea was to start offering camping sites for RV and tent campers. There's also an existing building there that would be rented as an Airbnb. This sort of takes care of two things. It gives more people exposure to the farm, the rescue animals, the river, everything. But it also helps bring in revenue for our nonprofit, our animal sanctuary. So that's what we do. We've talked about potentially holding small events in the future. We have been approached by people who would like to have small weddings there. We haven't had anything yet, so that's- that's kind of what we're thinking.
Great. Anybody have any- any commissioners have any questions? I like to say that I know this place personally. It is a small piece of heaven down there, anywhere on the Jane River. But you have done a wonderful job working with that, and-
Thank you.
Just, we would like to, I guess, close that and see if any- no more questions? Still have any more questions?
Open it.
Want to comment? So with the considerations or the concessions that- considerations that were sent forward, we did have one amendment request, and it was around a commercial trash receptacle. While we'll certainly take care of the trash and provide trash receptacles for our guests, we'd prefer not to have an actual permanent commercial bin on the property. we'd prefer not to have an actual permanent commercial bin on the property, sort of takes away from the aesthetics and just kind of the general sense of what we're trying to do, but we will take full responsibility for trash removal and it being done properly and within, you know, waste ordinances, so that was our only requested amendment.
Okay. No more, anybody else to speak, we don't have anything, I've closed, I'm going to close the public comment. Do I have a motion to pass this on?
So moved, yeah, just pass it on to the...
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Five of five, so passed, would you move on to the board of supervisors?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case?
Mr. Chairman, our next case is 21 S U P 296, this is the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association. It's on Tax Map 122, parcel 4, lot 3A, it contains approximately 5 acres, and it's located at 11851 West James Anderson Highway, Buckingham, in the Maesville Magisterial District, it's currently zoned A1, and the applicant wishes to continue the agricultural use as been, as has been consistent with the current uses as approved in their permit 13 S U P 217, and to promote increased agricultural use and agritourism use. The applicant is asking for a modification and amendment to the original approval to include striking conditions 9 and 22, and amend condition 21 to state the facility shall be used for indoor meetings, conferences, receptions, sales, trainings, and outdoor agritourism events such as, but not limited to, agricultural sales, shipping, bull riding, barrel racing, roping, horse training, cattle handling, and festivals. Below, I have provided for you the amended conditions, the original conditions were turned in with the application, and were introduced to you at the November 22nd meeting. Ms. Ligon, and, along with Mr. Thomas, to speak on behalf of Buckingham Cattlemen's Association.
Okay, open them.
We do have an individual signed up for the public hearing, and it's Mr. Thomas.
Open public hearing, open comment.
I'll be very brief, my name is Alvin Thomas, I live at 1112 Thomas Road, Dillon, Virginia, I'm in District 2. I'm a member of the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association, I'm also the recording secretary for the association. I support the modifications and the amendments as requested for S U P 296. I think these modifications would increase the utilization of this multi-use facility and, and facilitate, this would help benefit the county citizens and, and make this a more viable operation of this facility. This facility has been supported both monetarily and by documents by the county, and we have received a sizable amount of money in the past from the Virginia Tobacco and Deminification Commission, and we've used these funds to build this facility and, and make this a multi-use facility for a lot of opportunities, and I think this would just be one more way to make this more available.
Thank you.
Questions?
Anybody have any question?
Did all the people comment?
No more comment?
Further comments?
Close public comment.
Do I need to make a motion on each change, or just...
To include their...
To include all three changes, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I want to make a motion, do we approve it, send it to the board supervisors with the three changes of condition 9, 20, and 22? Did I make the right one?
Do I have a second?
9, 21, and 22, I'm sorry.
Oh, nine?
9, 22, and 21.
All right, okay. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt this with the, with modifications to 9, 20, and 2, and 21. All in favor of this to be passed to the board of supervisors, please raise your right hand. Five of five, so passed. Thank you. Next case?
The next case is 21 S U P 297, this is George and Susan Pamela Goodwin. Property is at 263 Bellmead Lane, Scottsville, Virginia, 24590, Tax Map 4, parcel 9. This parcel contains approximately 102.3 acres. It is an A1 agricultural zoning district, and the applicants wish to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb, bed and breakfast with campsites. Mr. and Ms. Goodwin have submitted their application, in your packet tonight, you will see that 14 conditions have been suggested to you for consideration. We do have the applicants with us this evening, and we have no one signed up for the public hearing.
Okay, and Mr. Goodwin?
Yes, sir.
How are you tonight?
All right, thank you.
Good, would you like to say a few words?
We are not, as like Katie, we're not an animal sanctuary, although we have my daughter's bees and cows and last horse still on the farm, but, no, we're, we have just decided we'd like to modify the apartment some, and change the use to, from an apartment to actually have the Airbnb type environment.
And you okay with the stipulations, or the 14 stipulations, everything okay with you on that?
Yes.
Thing else you'd like to say? I think we, we know that you have a beautiful place also down there, so.
Thank you, thank you, we try to keep it, keep it right, and that end of the county proud at least, and Ingle keeps farming for us, and keeping that part at least not overgrown or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Close public comment. Any questions from the commissioners on, on this? If not, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, do we move it on to the board of supervisors, pass it, and move it on to the board supervisor?
Second.
We have a motion in second to move to board of supervisors, all in favor, raise your right hand. unanimous, so be it, thank you very much.
Thank you, rest of your time.
Next.
Our final case under old business this evening is case 21 S U P 298. The landowner and applicant is Ike Yoder, he's at 7041 Crump Town Road, Tax Map 194, parcel 15. This parcel contains approximately 122.58 acres, and he is in the Curtsville Magisterial District. He is A1 agricultural district, his wish is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a sawmill. This case came to the attention of the zoning administrator by way of a complaint. After investigation and meeting with the landowner, it was discovered that a large area of land had been disturbed, and DEQ approval and permitting, and erosion and sediment control land disturbance permit would be necessary. DEQ and county officials conducted a site visit on September 24th, 2021, and a communication is included in this packet. Mr. Yoder has contacted a civil engineer and is working to mitigate these issues immediately. We've had follow-up with Lynn Hill, who is our ENS officer and zoning enforcement officer, and the necessary measures have been taken to mitigate any problems that have, were initially caused by the excavation on-site. Mr. Yoder is here with us, and as the packet states, he wishes to stay in compliance with all federal, state, and local permitting. He's here this evening to address questions or concerns, and I believe he has his engineer with him as well.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Mr. Yoder, nice to have you, would you like to tell us a little more what's, what's happening with this project?
Well, I like to have my business at home, you know, we don't have vehicles. My family, there. Now, we've received some negative feedback on it, you know, I just hope we could keep everybody happy. I don't have a whole lot to say about it, I mean...
Is the sawmill in compliance of what we, what we're seeking from you?
So.
And you okay with the 10 stipulations that we've, we presented you?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, as far as compliance, Mr. Yoder is working with his engineer and DEQ in the county for mitigation for the excavation at the driveway entrance, but there is not a sawmill that has been constructed on this property as of yet.
Okay.
So I don't want you to think that he's not operating one on property or due to a compliance issue, because there is no sawmill on this property right now.
So there's no sawmill right now?
Right, his desire...
Yeah, I was, I thought that's, that's what you were saying, you were operating a sawmill, so.
I just, you know, I hope to in the future if...
So VDOT is, you're working with VDOT also, right?
I'll approve the entrance.
Okay, they have approved it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We do have a voicemail, four emails, and three individuals signed up to speak regarding this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, open public comment?
Start with the voicemail.
...in Buckingham, that is coming up for public comment. I am opposed to this sawmill, I do not want 15 to 20 logging trucks on that dangerous road every day. I have property right near there, and I am opposed to the sawmill on Route 609. Thank you, my phone number is 804-873-7035, thank you.
Our first email begins, "I am writing in regards to the proposed sawmill on Crump Town Road, 609. As a resident whose house and business is located on Crump Town Road, I'd like to point out the most obvious safety concern of this proposal is that being, Crump Town Road is in no way able to safely accommodate the proposed amount of heavy semi-truck traffic. It is a narrow, unmarked, no yellow center lines or white shoulder lines, hilly, curvy road that more resembles a mountain road in many stretches. One stretch requires you to get one side of your vehicle off the road to accommodate even a non-commercial vehicle. Just a month ago, I was only going 35 when I met an oncoming, fully loaded logging truck in a blind curve, completely in my lane. Had I not been traveling slowly, I would not have had time to get my vehicle completely off the road. This road already has weeks of heavy semi-traffic of biosolid trucks, logging trucks, VDOT repair trucks. The second bridge over the Appomattox going to 460 located in Prince Edward County is a single-lane bridge that is leaning significantly to one side and at the bottom of a steep hill. VDOT has repaired it multiple times already. I can't believe it could accommodate more semi-traffic. In good conscience, anyone voting on this should drive Crump Town Road from Francisco to 460 several times. Imagine meeting several oncoming semis not in their lane, and then you will have an educated opinion as to how to vote on this. In my opinion, this obviously commercial operation meant for roads like 460 or 15 should not be located in an agriculturally zoned area. Even beyond the considerations of noise, pollution, and lower property values, the infrastructure is simply not there. The safety of the residents will be compromised. Thank you for your time and happy holidays. Lindsey Constable, Crump Town Road resident. Dear Buckingham County administrators, I would like to comment on the proposed sawmill on Crump Town Road. I live on Crump Town Road and generally enjoy the tranquility of a rural residence. The proposed sawmill, according to Mr. Yoder, will put an average of 15 to 20 vehicles a day on Crump Town Road. Mr. Yoder further estimates that this number will increase. The logging trucks will erode the tranquility of my residence. The logging trucks will pass by my house on Crump Town Road constantly, roughly two to three an hour, with noise levels characteristic of the, of these heavy-duty trucks. The physical road will take a beating as well. Historically, logging trucks result in proportionally more accidents as compared to large trucks as a group. The mean age of logging trucks is roughly 13 years old versus all trucks at nine years old. These two fact points eventually, these two facts point eventually to more accidents on Crump Town Road with more serious injury or fatalities. Please deny this request for a special use permit as proposed. Thank you, Michael Beasley, 4715, Crump Town Road. Dear Commissioners, I am Jonathan E. Dick, and my wife and I own and reside at 6072 Crump Town Road in the Curtsville District. I would like to go on record as opposing the referenced case requesting a variance in the zoning to allow a commercial manufacturing sawmill at 7041 Crump Town Road for the following reasons. Zoning is for the purpose of planned growth, not anti-growth. Zoning allows the citizens wanting to locate in a particular area to understand the allowed activities in an area. Allowing this request to proceed violates the rights of those that move into this A1 zoned area. The existing residents such as myself do not have an option to move away from the traffic and noise this sawmill will create. Mr. Yoder has an existing business, and this request benefits him and his partners only, not the residents of Crump Town and the surrounding area. There are special needs children that live on this road. In addition, there are several elderly over 80 years that are still driving that also live on the Crump Town Road. This additional large truck traffic on this secondary road will cause a safety issue for all that reside here. In addition, Mr. Yoder and associates have made clear that they wish to expand this sawmill if approved. Mr. Yoder has not operated transparently and in good faith regarding his intentions has been, and has been demonstrated by his lack of requesting permits, environmental damage to the creek, and abiding by the guidelines regarding the signage for this hearing. I find it extremely hard to believe that an existing business owner for over six years, as Mr. Yoder states in his request, that Mr. Yoder would be unaware of the need to notify the county and obtain permits for such an operation. One can only speculate whether this behavior would continue if this request for a S U P was approved. Again, this request, if approved, would not benefit anyone other than Mr. Yoder and associates, and would be a hardship and financial loss in property values to the surrounding neighbors. For most folks, their property is their largest asset, and this would rob us of the value along with the peace and safety of the A1 zoned area we moved into. There is no benefit or upside to the residents on Crump Town Road. I respectfully request that you decline this on-site request. Sincerely, Jonathan Dick, 6072 Crump Town Road. Good evening, tonight I would like to express my concerns with the request for a special use permit for the purpose of operating a sawmill by the applicant in case 21 S U P 298, Ike Yoder. My concerns are as follows. Road, while State Route 636, Francisco Road is identified as a major collector by VDOT, it still lacks many needed improvements that address various site issues. Driveways right on road, curves twist which cause blind spots, hills, road width, lack of center line and sections, et cetera. Many of these geometric deficiencies make general traffic tricky on any day, especially if the traffic is not familiar with the road. Because the volume of residential collector traffic is already great, the addition of increased logging traffic will only exasperate the impact of such deficiencies. In addition, Crump Town Road is a secondary road and is unable to handle such type of traffic as well. Lack's turn lane for big trucks, both egress and ingress, center lane, center line, narrow road, et cetera. Zoning and comprehensive plan. According to the Buckingham County Comprehensive Plan, the county has identified numerous goals, objectives, and strategies for the future development of Buckingham to achieve its vision. In addition, the county determined various priorities, several of these priorities include the following. Encourage development within designated village centers, which this is not. Evaluate rezoning and conditional use permit applications to ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing and planned land use. This specifically relates to this case as the area is not zoned for this type of business. As a reminder, the zoning ordinance creates the land use regulations that encourage the realization and implementation of the comp plan. The proposed site for this sawmill is currently zoned agriculture, thus has been identified by the county to be compatible for various permitted uses, which an operating a sawmill is not. It does concern me whenever a special use permit is approved because it only means a variance has been allowed in an area where otherwise the county and its citizens have previously determined its desired usage to maintain the overall vision for the county by way of county citizen participation and adoption of the comp plan. In closing, I encourage each of you on the planning commission to give great thought on your decision tonight on this special use permit request. The role of the planning commission, as the name implies, is to plan. You could, each can assist in helping determine how the county, our county, its communities manage changes in growth and development. Therefore, based on my concerns previously noted, I respectfully request that the special use permit for the purpose of operating a sawmill at 7040, at 7041 Crump Town Road, Farmville, Virginia, Curtsville Magisterial District, not be recommended to the board of supervisors. Thank you, Mary S. Hickman. Thank you, Mary S. Hickman, one-one-nine-one-six, Francisco Road, District Three, Curdsville and New Store Precinct. Now, Mr. Chairman, we have three individuals signed up to speak. The first will be Rita Dick, followed by Al Busek, and then Josh Amos.
I'm Rita Dick, and I am one of the neighbors that lives on Crump Town Road. We moved there, and we bought our farm in two thousand and five, and it's been a life dream to have a farm. My grandparents were dairy farmers. My husband has worked very hard UPS. He's finally retired. We have three children, grandchildren. We moved out here to Buckingham because of the peace, because of the rural, because of the farm. And we could have purchased somewhere else, but we wanted to be in that type of a area, zoned area for agriculture and farms. I'm a horsewoman. We have cattle. I had sheep. We have goats. We have chickens. You know, the area we live in is the farm rural setting. I respect wanting to have a business at home. You have a business running somewhere already. If you wanted to move your family and have your business at home, why did you not purchase land already in that designated area and move your family there? Obviously, you don't want to live in an industrial area either. None of us want to live in an industrial neighborhood, and that is what they're asking of us. So it's going to impact us. It's not just his family and his life. It's going to impact all of us on that road. And I'm asking you, please, please don't pass this. He has a right to have a business. He can move his family to that industrial piece of land that's already designated, and that's what I'm asking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al Busek?
My name is Al Busek. I live just off of Crump Town Road. I live at the junction of Paradise Road, and I'm kind of surprised in some ways. I feel like I'm probably the only positive person considering this. We had recently two hundred acres cleared of logs down the road from my house. I leaned over and I asked my wife, "Do you remember when that was?" And she says she doesn't. That was a lot of log trucks coming out of there. I guess it didn't register in our minds that that was a terrible thing. I'm a restorer. I've restored many buildings. We used to have Moss Brothers had a sawmill. I've been here since nineteen eighty. The Moss Brothers had a logging operation not far from where we were at. Accidents. I guess I just don't see that we can accommodate someone trying to provide for his family. One of the greatest things about Buckingham is they take care of the roads. I'm very grateful for that. We just had a brand-new bridge put on Paradise Road. They widened it and did it within a week of when they told us they would do it. I think they're very capable of taking care of the roads and travel that road. Many times going back into Buckingham Courthouse, restored a house in Glenmore. The only one, the only problem I've had on that road was with a pickup truck. It wasn't with a big truck. Usually you can see the trucks coming accordingly. So I know, I know I'm maybe the only positive one out of this whole thing. It's just a lot of negativism, and yet I think it's something that we should consider that as, you know, even on our plaque, we have logs up there. We are a very accommodating people, and I hate to be the only wart in the fabric of things, but I live on that road. And anytime someone comes and wants to provide another service, at least for us people that work with wood, I'm in. I'd like to see that. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Josh Amos?
How you doing? I'm Josh Amos, own three hundred and seventeen acres at the corner of New Store and Buckingham Spring. As a crow flies at seventy-three hundred feet from my land to where he wants to put the sawmill, I'm for it because I'm in the timber business. I own logging crews, and pretty much that's all we have in Buckingham, Charlotte, Lunenburg, Mecklenburg County is logging. So I'm all for any sawmill or anything to do with timber business. We cut a bunch of timber in that area, never had any accidents. At one time, I had thirty-six tractor trailers on the road of my own, cut a pile of timber in Buckingham. I've never had accident in Buckingham County. Pile of accidents, but not in Buckingham County. But I understand these people want to be in the quiet and all of that stuff, but timbering is agricultural. I mean, it's farming. We're farming trees, and it's, that's just a way of life. Can't change it just because people want quiet. I cut trees next to people's houses, get cussed out, screamed at. They can't change it. I pay for the trees. I'm going to cut the trees. But at the same time, everybody's upset about the road, and it is a tight little road. If any, I call, I haul logs to his sawmill he owns now in Charlotte County. I know why he wants to move to Buckingham, because it's a pain in butt for them to get ten guys to Charlotte County every day to go to work. But none of my trucks would be directed to go down Crump Town Road, other than the mile and, a mile and one-tenth, it's going to be from Francisco Road to his driveway. And I mean, that would be the smartest thing, is everybody go that direction, because Crump Town Road is a kind of a rough road and stuff. But truck drivers are a whole different breed of people also, so can't promise that would always be the case, but that would be, is I was, I would direct my people. Also, there's already a commercial business on Crump Town Road, six tenths of a mile from where he wants to build a sawmill. Twenty, thirty trucks a day leave that commercial business every day. Nobody complains about it. The man who owns that commercial business is not complaining about this or he's for this. And I just, I'm, I understand why they're griping, but I'm, I think it should go through just because I know whatever it would take to please everybody, that man would do. So, but that's just what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We don't have any others signed up to speak for the public hearing.
Okay, closed public comment. Mr. Yoder?
Yes, sir. Chip has a couple things we'd like to point out on his plans.
We don't have the capability to have presentations this evening, unfortunately, on the screens, but that's perfect.
Just to point out, make sure everybody can see it. This is the, the piece of property. Basically, here's Crump Town Road here. He's going to put his facility back more along the northern boundary, but the northern boundary is kindite mining, large timber tract. Proposing to put it about three hundred and fifty feet, the closest building would be three hundred and fifty feet from that property line. The rest of the buildings will be a thousand feet from the road, thousand feet or more, probably, or more, from this southern boundary, and a thousand feet to the east from the western boundary. I think that Mr. Yoder has done a good job of correcting his issue. Caught in. I say caught in because I truly believe he didn't do it on purpose. I met with him and Mr. Hill, Lynn Hill, out there, and we went over several different options on how to make corrective actions. I think he was pretty quick on making those corrective actions. I think DEQ has already been back out as of the fifteenth and was pleased with the progress you had made on that. He has since seeded the whole, the open area. Now, just so you know, all this gray area would be potential lay-down area, log area, but it's not there now. Basically, right now, he's cleared it and he's reseeded it. He's drilled in most of it. For a larger picture of what's going to happen, that's generally how it is. Trucks will come in, store his raw material in the back, put it through the mill, and then he'll come back and put his product in the front, and then they'll load it. Anything else you wanted me to mention?
Thank you.
Y'all need to...
Thank you.
And leave this here if it helps you visualize it, maybe.
Did DEQ was all right with everything? Is it in writing somewhere that we can see that they approved everything?
I did not receive the report.
We haven't received the report at the county level yet. Either. I know that visual observations with the DEQ inspector and the county inspector, it met the level for DEQ, so we'd be waiting there.
So we don't have the report?
No, sir. They've not sent it to us.
Just to point out, before he would go, just before the actual building stage, he would have to get a full... Right now, he's mitigating it, trying to get it back into a negative.
But to me, if the DEQ is not happy with it, it's not right for me to push it forward, right? Am I thinking right? And in my paperwork, I don't have the VDOT entrance blank.
VDOT entrance should be a copy of where he received from, I can't remember who signed off on the VDOT form, and it should be here in the packet where he has, he has a permit with them. It's not a permit for the commercial construction. It's a permit to come into compliance with VDOT, which was something that stemmed from this activity. So if it's, I thought it was in with the DEQ paperwork, but I can verify that and make sure it's put back into this packet, Mr. Allen?
Well, I just got the VDOT thing blank on the bottom. Done that, nothing from VDOT.
I've got a completed one here.
I think that we have a completed one.
Maybe somewhere else I missed it, but...
Any other concerns that you need to, we need to ask Mr. Yoder?
I have a concern about the traffic on the roads, and I really don't know about logging trucks, Mr. Allen. Didn't we have that concern with the previous applicant? And I think it's something the board needs to look at, what roads that we're going to allow logging trucks on, how we're going to allow logging trucks in areas. So, yeah, so I need more information.
The only problem with that is, yes, there are some roads that you probably don't want them on, but as far as the state's concerned, the state will not stop any trucks, any vehicles from any roads, you know, unless you got a bridge that's too small to carry it. Other than that, it's, it's legal for any vehicle to go down most any road.
Okay.
But I know what you're saying. I get, I get the same issue over in my area that...
Right. And that's what I'm saying. I don't know about the amount of logging trucks that are going in there.
They're just fifteen, fifteen to twenty a day.
Fifteen to twenty a day.
And they're counting on increasing that.
Have any issues? Any comments? I'm a little reluctant myself. I know all these trucks on the road, and we just had this issue come up. Lot of controversy over it. I think we either need more information, or we need to, we need to do something else before we pass this.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to VDOT some more about this part.
That's what I'm saying. We need the VDOT and the DEQ to be put in our packets also.
Okay. Is that possible, Nikki?
We could put this on hold until next month?
So is it a continuation?
So you've closed the public hearing? So you won't have to hold the public hearing, and what you want is more feedback from VDOT regarding the stage that Mr. Yoder is currently at, and I'll ask DEQ for their formal report. They have not completed that. Their specialist regarding the streams and creeks, Carol Witt, was well pleased. This is just a verbal conversation Lynn Hill and I had after that site visit, but we have not received that formal plan, but I'm happy to follow up with the individuals that are working this particular case, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be good to have it in writing instead of just...
Will anyone be commenting on safety issues that was brought up?
As far as the traffic?
Traffic, yeah. Traffic issues would, I guess, VDOT would be...
Mike, we could ask Scott Frederick from VDOT to come in to speak to the roadways, the volume of traffic, and the types of trucks that currently use the primary and secondary roads here in the county. Did you want anyone else regarding safety, you know, law enforcement, state police, sheriff's office to address that?
I'll take anybody you got, really. I, I really think we need more information.
Scott Frederick would be good, yeah. VDOT would be good.
Ma'am?
I just said VDOT would be good.
I hear a lot of comments from the public. It's just a problem, and I, we want to, you know, we're just here as servants. We don't, we don't know how it would be a year down the road, whether it be forty trucks coming in and out. So we'll move this on. We'll put it on hold until our next meeting and go from there. Yeah. I don't really think we'll know, the traffic data is going to come from what his output is, and it's going to be traffic in and out from the sawmill. And I think that's what the problem will be for the public, for what's coming and going, don't you? The noise, yeah. Noise, you know. Like I said, I'll take any information I can, I can get on it.
We'll draw a nice picture showing the nearest residents.
Okay.
To show you how far away everything is.
Okay.
I think, like I said, I think VDOT, a report from VDOT is more what we need about what the traffic is and the condition of the roads. And the DEQ report that we need to be officially put in our packet. So if you have something that you think may be of value, you can pass that on to Nikki. She'll put it in our...
I'm sure the DEQ report is probably, they came on the fifteenth with the holiday.
I don't, I don't know that we'll have it before the January twenty-fourth meeting, but I'll receive some type of communication from that DEQ department that we can put with the file.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I have submitted the Planning Commission work session dates and regular meeting dates for the year 2022. As you can see, our next meeting would be January twenty-fourth, 2022, as far as a regular meeting on that fourth Monday. I've submitted this to you.
So moved to approve. Now the second?
Second.
So moved in second to, for the Planning Commission calendar for 2022. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Five of five, so passed. Reports?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet tonight, you have the building permits report. I have nothing further under zoning administrator this evening.
Okay. Commission matters in... Commission matters and concerns? Concerns, matters? Executive, close session.
I make a motion that we go into closed session under two point two dash three seven eleven point eight point five for the discussion. Discussion concern of prospective businesses or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of business or industry interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the county. Plus, two point two dash thirty-seven eleven point eight point seven. Consultation of legal, consultation of legal counsel, of briefing by staff members and the consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing on open meetings would adversely affect the negotiation of stages of public bodies. Does that make a second on?
Second, going to the closed session.
Okay. All in favor of closed session? Is that right, Nikki? Raise your right hand. So be it. We're closed session. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
You cut everything off?
Jack.
Oh, is he? He's cool. Oh, my gracious. Oh, no, it's bad to the bone.
I don't think, huh?
Everything.
Yes, we're ready.
Yeah. Call him a goatee. Oh my God.
I move that we return from executive closed session under 2.2-3711.a.5. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community.
05.1.72. Okay.
I need to read the second code too.
Yeah, you can just say the number. I wouldn't worry about all the rest of it.
Okay. And also 2.2-3711.a.7. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the public body.
Second.
So moved in second. Do we have a vote? All in favor of this?